Let's call this meeting to order. Eric, we're gonna start the public hearing agenda. Amanda, is that accurate? How do you want to call this public hearing to order?
So you simply call it to order and then begin discussion.
Alright, called order, a roll call. We'll just go. This is a public hearing, receive input from the public regarding hunting on town property. Any residents who would like to speak regarding this issue are more than welcome. Anyone who wants to talk, raise your hand, or please chat Amanda and she will make sure that you get, get your opportunity. Yes, Eric?
I just want to lead off real quick to bring everybody up to speed where we are so far. So, the first question that was raised at the last meeting is what is the town's liability for doing this? I checked in with the town's insurance carrier, which is Karma, and they're basically neutral on the idea. They don't care whether we allow it or we don't. It would only become an issue if we had actual claims against the town or they had to pay out for some incident that happened. But presuming that doesn't happen, it will be neutral with the town's insurance. There are apparently at least four towns in the state that allow it. There's another series of towns that cull excess deer on a count-wide basis. In other words, they pay people to harvest the deer to keep the population down. At this point, my understanding from talking to the selectmen is that mostly what's for discussion right now would be bow hunting only and probably on two parcels of land, one being the parcel the transfer station is on, but excluding the landfill and the transfer station working itself. And the second would be property off of Bunker Hill Road, which is about an 18-acre parcel and potentially the park where that connects to town property off of Parker Bridge Road. So far, I've received a total of six residents that have sent me something indicating that they would be interested in hunting on town property if it was made available. And that's pretty much all I've got, so whatever else discussion you have is what it is.
Okay, would anyone from the public like to speak?
Jeff, should we go one by one?
Sure, go ahead, Amanda.
Okay.
Start with Diane because she generously raised her hand.
Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, thank you. One of the things you didn't say, Eric, and I just want to make sure I understand. This would be for Andover residents only?
That's not up to me, that's up to the Board of Selectmen. It sounds like that's what the Board was interested in, is opening it up only to Andover residents.
Andover residents only.
Okay. Okay, fine. Basically, I am not a hunter. You know, shooting bambis is not something I do. But I do, you know, taking me out of the equation, what's good for the town. I think it is a legal activity. I like the two places that you have designated as the only spots to do it. I wouldn't want to see bow hunting at the gazebo. So those two areas are, you know, good. I'm sure that, you know, the season is a fairly short season. It's usually before guns are allowed and maybe shortly thereafter, but it's a fairly short season. There's still no hunting on Sunday, which I think is a really good idea. I don't like hunting on Sunday. I think the woods should be available for people who don't hunt to enjoy, whether it's bird watching or mushroom picking or whatever they're doing out there. But again, I assume all the laws of the DEP would be enforced. So, you know, being a legal entity on those two properties to Andover residents only, I think is a good thing and you should be.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay, next up, we have Belle and Lorraine.
Hi, everybody. I don't have any issue with the bow hunting. I wasn't sure if it was gonna be dry pole and bow, but I think bow hunting, as mentioned, is fine with me.
What is the range?
Please repeat that.
Rain, could you repeat that? We couldn't really hear you.
I said, what is the range of the season? What it is that?
Actually, in the last couple of years, bow hunting has been from around September 15th, the middle of September, all the way through all the other seasons to the end of the year. They opened it up through the gun season and muzzleloader season so that the bow hunters could hunt throughout all those seasons. Bow hunters that are bow hunters, Billy, you know, a lot of them just want to hunt with a bow. They don't want to hunt with a gun and so the state said that it was alright for you just to continue to hunt with a bow throughout those other seasons.
And Scott, can you confirm? I know Diane said something about Sunday hunting. I was under the impression that there is, didn't they pass something so you can hunt on Sundays now?
Right, there is, there is hunting now, bow hunting only on private land on Sundays. That's a new law that came into effect about, I don't know, three or four years ago, I think. But if there was a lot of blowback about that, hunting on town-owned property, that could be something that, you know, we would not be, not open to suggesting.
Scott, just so I understand, you're saying the season is September 15th through, what's the ending?
The end of the year.
What's, through December 31st? Okay.
I think, as you said, that's a private land only.
Private land only.
So it wouldn't apply here because it's not private land technically. It's public land, so it would still be restricted on Sundays.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's also, it's worth noting that, you know, for all of us that have to deal with, unfortunately, ticks and Lyme, every deer that we cull is about a thousand ticks over the course of its lifetime. So, given that we have other people wanting to enjoy these properties, it doesn't, it certainly helps, makes it a little safer for them in the long run as well. It's amazing how prolific it becomes, so.
All right, next up, we have Jerry Kram.
I was very interested when I heard Diane speak. I'm not a hunter either. It seems like it's limited to just two town properties and I'm not sure the size of them. I empathize with Jeff Murray, who lives across the street from me and has a narrow strip of town property behind him. And I was wondering what would happen if some hunter shoots a deer, the deer runs onto private property, then what happens? Does that become a trespassing issue? How big is the town properties that, there's two of them that I heard listed? How big are they and are they big enough? And will they be required to get a hunting permit to do that? You know, the town is, you said not showing any liability through the insurance. They're not holding us liable, but, you know, things happen. And then what? So I think you need to think it out pretty thoroughly and you need to not only think it out, but you need to really define what you're allowing and what you're not allowing. And I think that that's something that, I mean, I don't like all the deer in my backyard either. And I'll tell you, every night they come and the buffet is open. And they eat and they eat everything. And it's a battle because you spend a lot of time and money planting plants and they come and clean you out. So I'm not against getting rid of some of them. However, you may do that, but I mean, you just gotta make sure that you define the rules and that monitor it, that people are playing by the rules.
Thank you, Jerry, for that, all those comments. And the parcel at the transfer station is around 80 acres and there's very few adjacent landowners, a pretty isolated spot. The one on Parker Bridge is even more isolated. And I think it's about 30 acres and it's surrounded by private property all around it that's, you know, vacant.
To answer your question, Jared, as far as if someone shoots a deer, you know, with an arrow and has to track it, they do a couple of different things by state. They have to let DEP know that they're tracking, if it goes off the line that they're on. And they are responsible to contact the landowner where they believe it went to and get permission to go and get it. And if they're unable to, they're supposed to contact DEP and let DEP know they shot a deer, it's going on a private property and they were not, they did not access. So there is a procedure in place that the state has and we would ask hunters to follow that. Beyond that, though, we also are looking to have them register with the town so that we know who they are, you know what vehicle they're driving. And so if somebody says, hey, there's somebody messing around down there, we can look at the list and say, no, it's not someone that's legal. They don't have a permit from the town, they haven't registered and addressed that, so.
Another thing, Jerry, this is in a preliminary stages right now. We're, this isn't gonna happen this year. We have a lot of work, seemingly a lot of the things that you've been speaking about right now.
I thank you for answering all the questions I had. It seems as though it's being, a lot of thought being put into it before it's being enacted. And I think that's really important. Thank you for doing that.
Right, we're gonna wait on this to weed out all the questions and we're gonna go through the other towns, what they have for regulations and the other towns and just look it, look the whole thing over clearly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, Mike Zada.
Yeah?
Chrissy Zada, is that you?
No, it's Mike.
I'm here too.
Okay, you're echoing just a bit.
So you gotta silence one phone or the other. Yep, perfect.
Mike, can you hear us okay?
Mike, you're on mute.
Looks like you're muted on both your computer and phone.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
There you are.
Okay, here we go, sorry. Do you want me to speak on this now?
Sure.
Well, I've been a hunter for about 35 years. I know all, like everything you're talking about, I know just about down to the wire. I know all of the procedures of hunting. The one thing I wanted to say is, we have a lot of town property near me and my biggest concern is, I've had Lyme disease from it. My daughters have had Lyme disease from it. I've lost a dog to Lyme disease. It's all from these deer ticks and I know other areas where I've talked to doctors and nurses who hunt. And they say you get rid of the deer, you trim the population down, you get rid of some of that Lyme disease. Like you said, I have deer in my backyard all the time, they eat everything. I love them, I hunt them all the time. I think that if we use hunters to do this, they will take the deer. We will get meat from the deer, people that who enjoy hunting. I don't track deer very far. When you shoot them with a bow, they don't go very far at all. When they do, you can go and knock on a door and say, can I come to your property and pick up my deer? Most people, especially in Andover, say yes, please come get it. They don't want to see the dead animal, they don't want to see anybody not get their animal. So as far as all of the, if anybody has a question on anything legal, illegal about hunting and stuff like that, I can answer questions, I can help out. But like you said, there's a lot of deer on those properties.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Elaine Bacard.
No, I'm okay with it, I agree. The deer are kind of a menace around here, so as long as it's bow hunting, that's great. Nope, just figure out the rules and regulations and stuff and make sure that the people who are out there doing it know what the rules are and that should be good.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you. Donna, I know you're on for the next agenda item during the regular meeting, but if you'd like to speak on it, please feel free.
Comments on it, but it is definitely interesting subject matter to listen to. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, Joanne.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The most of the time, you know, mainly because of, yesterday I listened to the last Board of Selectmen meeting about this subject matter and then I took and sent an email to all of them today, to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, basically because of the way the meeting went. I'm a little happier hearing the way things are being presented today. You know, I was behind the times with catching up with the meeting and then I felt like it was kind of getting rushed through. A couple of members were really trying to rush it through and I get it. I have family members that are hunters, they're very skilled, they do things like this. But I was really worried that we, so I understand hunting, I'm not opposed to it. It's nothing that I do or would ever do, but I just felt like we were, the way it was being presented was it was gonna be all town properties. It was going to be, no, and I felt like it was getting rushed through for this year, which I know does, the hunt ends December 31st. I felt like, why are we rushing this so much? There are a couple of things that were brought up tonight that were interesting, though, that we all should keep in mind. Eric himself said there's only four towns in Connecticut presently that allow this.
Well, that I know of.
Okay, no, I did a little research myself too and couldn't find a lot. So there's a reason for that. Also, I feel like there's already a lot of property in town, you know, with the state forests and everything, where hunters can go. And again, having, so that's why I really felt like I wanted to speak. And then people that are hunters, they have friends and they gave permission from private land, you know, and get their spaces to go that way. Again, I'm more, I'm a little more pleased with the way the conversation's going tonight as far as there's only gonna be two big parcels that are allowed. You know, and then my other thought is just it's a lot for the town to manage. You know, you guys have so much going on, you have new people coming in. I don't want to sidetrack because this is about the hunting. But I'm just afraid, and again, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be this year, so maybe it's gonna be well thought out. Jeff Murray had brought up the point of just like, can we talk about it? Can we have people come in? So I'm hoping, besides me that took the time to do this and like the other people that have spoken, that the six people that, you know, were interested are here tonight because I want to see them. I want to hear from them. But I want to see that they took the time to attend the Board of Selectmen meeting and present their case and why they want to hunt. Like I said, in my family, my brothers and different people in my family have their connections and they have places to go. I just want to make sure. I hope that the liability thing isn't an issue for the town because like Mr. Kramay said, you know, they can say this and that and then some catastrophic thing happens on town land and I don't know if there's suits or things like that. Again, I'm bringing up the negative parts. And I just wanted the process to be slowed down, well thought out and rules and regulations and things like that so that it's safe. Because I do live kind of near some of this land and as the hunter presented and different people have said, that whole trapping thing. I don't think that every animal, unfortunately, I wish they would, dies right away and then could find their way on someone's property. And that's, for someone to see, I wouldn't want to see that, but, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
So Peter Casper, I know you're also on to help out with our agenda for the regular meeting, but if you have thoughts, please feel free.
No, thank you, though, I appreciate the offer.
Okay, who is Talaga? Would you like to participate?
Talaga, is that Mike Talaga or Jeff?
No, it's me. I think I got it unmuted. Is it on, can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, well, I just had a quick question. I mean, was it just gonna be open to Andover residents?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And then just for the people concerned with the liability, once the town signs the permit, all liability is released. Just in case anybody didn't know that.
Right, thank you, Mike.
That was it. Thank you.
Louise?
Hi, I have no comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike Zada, I believe that is your phone number, the 208-2345?
No, that's not my number.
Okay, would the person with 208-2345 like to speak?
You're still muted. You have to unmute yourself if you're calling in from a phone.
Mike Zada, is the other phone number yours? It's 604-1374?
No, that's not us.
Okay. So would the person with the 604-1374 like to speak? You are muted. If you would like to speak, you have to unmute yourself.
And can you maybe unmute them, maybe on their?
I'm trying, but it won't let me.
Sometimes on the phone part, it's hard to find it.
And you missed the one whose screen name is owner.
Well, maybe if they're muted, they could chat Amanda and let her know that they're having problems with that and we can come back to either one of them.
Yeah, I think if they're calling in, they might not have the chat feature, but it looks like they're calling in from a line.
Okay, so while we're here, do any of the select people want to speak to this issue again? Anyone else?
I don't think tonight anybody brought up that we're gonna be following the DEP's hunting regulations.
Okay.
I don't know of anything else.
So to move this along, I don't know if there's anything else that we're required to do, Eric, to end the public hearing?
No, if you choose to do that, you may simply, if there are no more comments, you may simply just close and adjourn the public hearing and then reopen the regular meeting.
All right, do any of the other selectmen want to add anything before we close this?
Yeah, excuse me, Jeff, somebody just chatted. The person that has owner, they put something in the chat here. It looks like they're unmuted.
So it looks like to unmute Paula, it's star six on a phone.
Okay, so whoever put in the chat, you're labeled as owner. If you can type in the chat your comment or, oh, somebody just unmuted. Here we go, okay.
Hi, this is Leanne Hutchinson. Excuse me, I just said the star six. Can you hear me?
Great, glad it worked. And when you go to mute back, it's the same thing, it's star six to go back, Leanne.
Okay, thanks. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, you sound a little far away. I want to just clarify what's been mentioned a couple of times about how many towns in Connecticut do this right now?
The number we're going with is four.
Okay, was there any, was there any qualification to that or is it exactly what we're talking about tonight, which is bow hunting?
So there are also 15 towns in western Connecticut that cull deer specifically. And because they cull deer on town property, they cannot also have it hunted. So they kind of have to pick one or the other and when they're culling, they actually pay a service to come in and do it. So there are a lot of towns that actually do deer removal that have property big enough to do it. Most of them will use some type of service where they paying someone to actually have it taken out there. Unfortunately for us, that costs funds that we don't have. And, you know, this is a little bit safer way to do it for us. We're not asking somebody to go with a high-powered rifle, it's a bow, you know, so.
Okay, I mean, I eat meat and everything, I think the bow hunting is disgusting. But I have your question is, it's not funny, but who's going to monitor this? I appreciate what's been said about permits and liability and everything, but who's gonna keep people from bringing guests, for example, or, you know, something like that? I mean, I'm assuming that that's not supposed to be allowed.
That's, no, that wouldn't be allowed, Leanne. It's just the people that are registered.
Well, Leanne, I mean, to be quite candid with you, you know, we're certainly not gonna have someone standing there checking people in and out. But, but if someone is reported to be there and they're not supposed to be and, you know, the DEP takes this stuff really seriously. You know, they're gonna lose their right to hunt in the state of Connecticut over this type of thing. So that they're, someone who actually is hunting legally is not gonna do something stupid. So it's, you know, you're more likely to have issues when you don't allow hunting because then people go hunt illegally. We already know that some of this is already happening down there. We know people are sneaking on the property and it's hard to catch them. And one of the advantages actually of having legal hunting is the legal hunters will tell us, hey, there's somebody down there that's not, I don't think they're from Andover, you know, I took down the slices later, what have you. So they'll actually in a way help us police the property that we currently don't have any policing happening on. There is a plus side to this as well from that point of view.
Okay, and speaking of the policing, is it, if there's a violation or somebody to, you know, come out as soon as possible and try to catch somebody who they think might be an issue? Is it the DEP who comes out or the state police?
It is DEP generally.
DEP, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Leanne.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Sure, Mike.
I'm not a hunter either, but what's the kill range of a bow and arrow?
Depends how good you are and whether you're running or not.
No, but I'm saying, how far does an arrow go? It doesn't go a half a mile or something like that, right?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So you gotta be pretty close up to the animal before you shoot.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so a miss, you're probably not gonna kill somebody.
According to DEP, Mike, the average kill shot that's reported is under 25 yards.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hey, can I say something? Oh.
I have another question. And Mike, you might be the person to answer this. When we're talking bow hunting, I'm thinking of the kind of bow that Tonto used. Are we also talking things like crossbows? Which are much more powerful?
Crossbows are legal in Connecticut.
I was actually gonna say something. If you don't mind, crossbows are legal in Connecticut, they do have a longer range. And if you do this hunt on the town property, the town would give us a permit to the hunter. You'd have to carry that permit and show that permit to any DEP officer, any state police officer that asks, even another hunter, you have to show it to them. And like they said, when we hunt our private land, we definitely police it ourselves very, very, like, stringently. We do not want poachers on and, like you said, I know that there's people up there hunting now. If it was me, I would limit it to no crossbows because they do travel 100-plus yards and a regular bow would probably only go maybe 40.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? Amanda, you're muted.
We would like to call on the phone number 208-2345 one more time, just to double check. You will have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
There you go.
There you are.
Hi, this is Dennis O'Brien, the town attorney.
Dennis?
Yes.
Do you have any comments on this issue? We're in our public.
No, no, I have no comment. I'm not, I'm not a hunter and grew up in the city, and I don't, uh,
Okay.
I'm learning a lot from listening to you.
You got it. All right, anyone else? Any of the other selectmen?
Um, you know, the comment was made about not using a crossbow, and I'll say, I'd like to leave it open to crossbow hunters, only because that's one of the categories, actually, that is useful for, you know, able-bodied hunters, you know, that have, may have a disability. Um, I, my neighbor actually hunts on my property and has a disability, and they use a crossbow because of it, so. You know, a crossbow kill rate is actually, you know, inside of generally sixty yards. Either a bow or crossbow could go longer than that, but, you know, most people, again, are gonna try for something, you know, inside of thirty, you know, or forty at the most, so. Um, and I'd like to, you know, if we're gonna do bow, I'd like to at least, you know, give a chance for, you know, residents that may have disability to be able to use a crossbow, so.
It's Joanne Heber one more time. Leanne Hutchinson brought up some things that were kind of troubling to me as well. I just didn't know, some of what bothered me was if people got wind that we were doing this, I was afraid, you know, hunters were gonna hear about it, since there aren't too many parcels like this around, or too many towns that are doing it, and then people sneaking in. I just, I can't see us keeping track of all of that. Again, I know, like you said, the hunters will report on other hunters, or the DEP. I really don't think they're in Andover that much, truthfully, but that's my opinion, and I think that's what I was really worried about regulating this, and this somehow getting out of hand. You know, maybe I'm off on that, but that was a worry.
Well, I think fairly, the DEP actually is in Andover a little bit, because we do have some, we do have some people that are already hunting this lane illegally that we've been trying to catch, so. Um, there's, you know, there's been a couple of tree stands down there that have had to, you know, be taken down, so. We know we have an issue with trying to catch people, and unfortunately, it's a little harder than it sounds, especially if you're not out there with some regularity, so, um, you know.
How many DEP officers are there in the eastern part of Connecticut? Any know?
No, but I know they have a, I know they have a rotation for this area of four people on call for the weekend, I can tell you that. Um, that would cover, you know, Tonlin County.
Okay, is there anything, anyone else who'd like to add anything to the topic? Jeff Murray, we haven't heard from you.
My thing is, um, I walked the Parker Bridge, Parker Hill property with Scott yesterday, and I think it's a suitable location. Um, it's, it's, um, it's far enough away from adjoining properties and residences where it should have a minimal impact, just like the transfer station property is. And the whole thing is, you know, we have, we have property with trails, we have property for other uses, and, you know, if this property is being unused, and we can benefit some hunters in town and maybe put a dent in the line disease. You know, I'm open to it, and judging by the comments, I think, you know, we do have a year to work on this. So if it's favorable, I think we should probably move ahead with investigating and coming up with a policy and rules to, uh, to regulate it.
Well said.
Okay. Eric, I'm assuming that you are good with the public hearing, and we can close this now?
I'm.
Jerry, go ahead. You gotta come off here.
I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for holding this public hearing, to listen to the residents of the town. I think that is so important, and you've done a stellar job. Thank you for the public hearing. Thank you for letting people in the town speak about it, share their feelings, and I think this worked really, really well. Thank you very much to the Board of Selectmen.
You're welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Jerry, showing up today.
Thank you to everyone for coming out and participating. All right, so I'm gonna call this section of our meeting, uh, well, I don't know if I need to make a motion during this, or someone needs to make a motion, but we're gonna adjourn the public hearing. We're now gonna move to our regular meeting. Uh, call to order, pledge allegiance. We'll all do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic which stands. Which stands, one nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, public speak. Anyone like to participate in public speak? You can all raise your hands. Ready? No? Okay.
Can I speak on one thing, Joanne Heber, really quick, really quick? My other issue that I missed, unfortunately, in all the meetings that I had been attending, was just your forestry issue that you guys are all discussing, and I've read the back minutes of that. I just hope, I also sent another quick email to you guys today that the whole reason we moved to this town was the lovely forest, the, you know, the woodsy feel, the nature, everything. We love our house that's surrounded by all of that, so. I know you wanna make some money for the town, and I get that, and, you know, the, um, what's the word? I know you'll do a good job with that. I just, I just really love where we live, and we love the forest and all that, so I wanted to be, um, responsible. Way to go about it. I know the plans won't come about till way later in the meeting, so I'll listen to whatever's coming forward with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, if, uh, everybody has thirty seconds, if they'd like to speak to Chat Amanda and let her know? Okay, hearing no further comment, we're gonna move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Anyone from the Board of Selectmen have any items they want to add to the agenda?
Are we deleting, uh, the COOL thing?
So, you're gonna make a motion to delete that one, Scott?
I motion to delete item nine D's COOL program.
All right, any seconds?
All second.
All right, any, well, we'll vote on that. Are all those in favor? Aye. Did we lose Adrian? No, there he is, okay. Anybody wanna delete anything, anything other than that? Okay, let's move on. We're gonna go to board and commission presentations, the combined financial department committee. Who's doing that presentation?
So, I can, if you would like. We have selected and made an offer to the assistance finance, assistant finance officer, who has accepted, and that portion is moving forward. There haven't been any real big updates on the software between the last meeting and this one.
Okay, anyone else on the board that wants to add to that? Okay, Economic Development Commission?
Hi.
Hi, Elaine, how are you?
Good. As chairman of the EDC, we have decided to go ahead and pick the brains of Hebron and their Hebron is Open for Business Task Force and what they've been doing. Uh, so our next EDC meeting is actually this Thursday, and we're gonna start discussing who's gonna be doing what. Um, I was able to put out on the Andover Economic Development Commission Facebook something for Hurst Farm, and a few weeks ago, I did Andover Pizza, but we have a lot of different businesses that we wanna cover, and that we wanna go ahead and just, um, and in what I put on, and Amanda and Catherine McGauley Lewis, we're the only three, I think, that can actually put things on, oh, post, oh, who else can post, Amanda?
Oh, I was just going to say, I can't yet, but it's you and.
Okay, so it's just Catherine McGauley Lewis and me. Okay. Um, so we have to look into that to try to figure out if we can go ahead and get some other people to be able to post their own businesses, but we'll, you know, we'll work that out. Um, because, you know, there's just so much that people can do. Um, but anyway, we have with us, um, two people from, I believe, two people, Peter and, um, uh, who else is here? Uh, for, yeah, for the Hebron Open for Business Task Force, and so we were hoping that they could go ahead and speak to um, what they're doing and how they got to the point that they're at.
Hi, this is Peter Casper. Sorry, I'm guessing wrong on which camera is working. There we go. Uh, Peter Casper from, I'm from Hebron's Board of Selectmen. I'm also the chair of Hebron's Open for Business Task Force, and Donna Lanza from the town of Hebron is also on the task force and with us as well. And so just as a quick summary, we worked back in the spring with EDC and the town, and as a Board of Selectmen, asked ourselves the question, are we doing everything we can possibly do to help our businesses as they transition through COVID? And so in conjunction with the town, the EDC, we came up with this idea for Hebron's Open for Business Task Force, which is dedicated to helping our businesses transition through COVID, so. Uh, we went out and formed a small task force, and then went about to create a series of events to determine, you know, figure out how we can better assist our businesses. And so we had, uh, we have a working spreadsheet, Donna, I don't know if, or Elaine, you may have shared that, I'm not sure. Uh, I don't know, Donna, you can pull that up and share your screen. Is that possible? I know, Amanda, are you controlling this? Can you give Donna the ability to present? I'm putting pressure on Donna now.
Go ahead, Donna.
All right.
Okay.
So what, this just, this spreadsheet that, we meet once a week, and we sort of track our progress in a series of events from the formation of the task force, and as she pulls that up, we launched, excuse me, a, um, so you see on the left side in column A, formation of the task force back in the middle of June, and then setting up a structure. We worked with the Parks and Rec Planning and Zoning, a series of departments to make sure we're working in concert, because the whole thing here is how can we complement the efforts that are already ongoing? Our biggest thing is trying to, how do we, how do we improve our connection with our town communities? Driving more people into the businesses, making them feel safe, providing information, and again, supporting our businesses with the messaging that's required to make people wanna come back to their businesses, potentially change buying behaviors, because even small businesses, everyone's flocking to the internet, so what can we do? And so we went about and created a website that was embedded into the Hebron Town website that's specifically supporting the businesses, and, and then, um, I guess the other thing, too, that was important, we created a Facebook page dedicated just to businesses. And we have about five hundred members now, just a little under five hundred. I keep saying five hundred because I'm in sales, and Donna keeps telling me, just under five hundred, but we have about five hundred there. The whole mission continues to be promoting the businesses, businesses of the week. We have a series of initiatives. Donna, if you're able to scroll down a little bit, just highlight a couple, and I don't wanna take up too much of your time. I just wanted to wanna introduce and appreciate Elaine asking us here to introduce what we're doing and talk a little bit about it, and the most important thing is, we, you know, we view, we're in one community. I think of Andover, Hebron, Marlboro, we're one community. We're a few small towns together. I think of my children going to Ram. And so what can we do to help, if anything? We're happy to do that. And so we have, we launched a shops local program, so we put a little money into buying some gift cards from businesses. We promote them on our website. We have a series of materials that do that. Excuse me, we highlight businesses of the week. I'll give them opportunities to post on Facebook and do a myriad of things. We, um, we're about, we have to Ram Kids in the DECA program that are about to launch an Instagram and Snapchat initiative to support this, because we really weren't finding we were getting a good push from that, the younger demographic, and primarily because the chair of the Hebron Open for Business Task Force has never been on Instagram or Snapchat, so I clearly couldn't lead that discussion. And so we've brought the DECA program in with the support of the school, so we're very excited about that. That's about to go live. And we have a new program, Elaine talked about restaurant, one of the restaurants in Andover, and, um, uh, we're about to launch a Taste of Hebron initiative, which we're gonna actually hold at Ram and promote our businesses as they transition to restaurants. Many that have the outdoor facilities are gonna lose those, obviously, because of the weather, and so how do we help them? We're gonna have some, a few events to basically have takeout locally at Ram and create something called the Taste of Hebron as an example. And so we have a myriad of sort of initiatives. We've got a broad task force in terms of, we have a couple of business owners, we have some, you know, someone from the Board of Selectmen, me and Donna from the town, and we have, uh, someone from AHM, so, and also from representing our school boards as well, so trying to get a diverse perspective, and so, uh, that's sort of it in a nutshell. I hope I didn't go through that too quickly, but we just wanted to introduce that and offer our support, or just be a sounding board, or anything that you see that you like, that we can help with. Uh, we're happy to do that, again, viewing ourselves as one, as one community battling to help some of these businesses that, um, who's, it's hard to open a business now, almost impossible, and our fear, and I'm sure it is for you too, is if some of these businesses shut their doors, they're not gonna reopen, and maybe someone doesn't take their place. And our, and our community is, the business community that we've reached out to so many times over the years, it's our turn to reach back out and see what we can do to help, and I'll, I'll close with this, because this isn't necessarily gonna cause a business to stay open, but a comment that I got from one of our business owners is, it was really exciting to know that the community cared and understood what they were going through and reached back out. So she told me it wasn't the money, it was the fact that you actually were doing something to try to help that really was most encouraging, because as you can imagine, if any of you are a small business owner, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty, especially as we roll back, and now we go into the colder months. Uh, and so we're just trying to do everything we can to, as a community, to help our businesses, and this is just one small effort, and it clearly isn't gonna change necessarily the outcome, but it's at least our effort to do something about it. That's what I have. Again, if there's questions, or again, if I've gone through something too quickly, please let me know, but I know you have a full agenda, so I just wanted to highlight that, and thank you to Elaine for allowing us the opportunity to present this.
You very much.
So as you can see, they've done an amazing effort, and they've involved everyone in it, including Ram and the DECA program, um, which my kids were in back when they were in Ram. Um, so it's really a community involvement thing, so it's not gonna be just stuck with the EDC. We'll be going ahead and tapping into other people to go ahead and help out, but, um, these guys are great in sharing their information and how they've gone ahead and done this. Um, and so we will definitely continue to pick their brains. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Peter. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you both.
It's like a great program.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, Elaine, anything else that you want to add?
No, no, that's it. I mean, I, you know, sometimes I just kinda think, oh, God, there's just no way we can do this, but then, you know, and then it's like, no, we can. You know, so it's just a matter of tapping into talent that we have in town and making sure that our businesses know that we do care. We wanna try to help them out in any way that we can. And that's something that we don't normally do, so, and it is because of COVID-19. It's because we have extenuating circumstances that all of this started, but I'd like to continue on with it to let our businesses know that we care.
And I know that's something the EDC is going to work on. And I I know that's something the EDC is going to work on this Thursday was a survey that they're working to put out to all the local businesses. So I'm going to create a list on Civic, our Civic platform through our website. So we can send out an email to all the local businesses and create our, you know, little network to see how we can support them and get feedback. And they can send photos and information on what's going on with their business, which I think will be really helpful.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you very much, Elaine. So. The next one was the Traffic Safety Committee. And Eric, I saw that we got data back from the speed sign.
Yes, so I, Joe was supposed to be on the call tonight, but I don't know exactly where he is. There are like two things I would like to discuss relative to this. The first is we got the first data off of the speed sign. And we're still struggling with a little bit getting, you know, clean data and aiming the thing exactly in the right direction. Basically, the cars coming at the sign where it was at the base of the hill on Lake Road. Weren't in frame long enough to meet the cutoff, so we didn't get that data. The only data we got for the cars were the cars going up the hill and away from the sign. So basically, the speed limit there is 25. Ninety-one percent of the vehicles were traveling over the speed limit. The average speed was 36. Fifteen percent of the vehicles were traveling more than 40 miles an hour. This is up the hill. One percent of the vehicle were traveling in excess of 55 miles an hour. And the fastest vehicle clocked by the speed sign was doing 81 miles an hour.
Up the hill.
Up the hill. So, you know, obviously residents have been complaining for some time about. Speed in the lake area as there are in many areas of town. Over time, we'll get better data for you, but that's a snapshot of what's happening. So basically, over a five, you know, five day period, at least four vehicles a day are going through there. Going at highway speeds, going up that hill. So you know. So that's data. We moved the sign around to the other side of the lake. We're trying to collect data from that side too. So hopefully we'll have have something for you reasonably quickly about speeds on that portion. And it's our intention to look at a series of different places in town. The other thing, the safety committee asked me to bring forward was the consideration. For a three-way stop at the intersection of Lake Street and Island Street. Happy to see Bill and Lorraine on the call since they live pretty much at that intersection. If we're going to do that this year, now is the time, because we're about to do the road painting. And we would include that stop bar in the painting now and then put up the stop signs. Board of Selectmen is technically the Traffic Safety Authority in the town of Andover. So that is a Board of Selectmen decision if you want to do that. You can't change speed limits, but you can change signage. So I know Joe said he spoke to all the neighbors around there. Everybody is agreeable. One of the families had some concerns, but it sounds like that that's been delayed. So that's where we're at with that. Just kind of depends on what you wanted to do. And I left you a motion to that effect if you wanted to. Go forward with that, or I can answer any other questions you have related to it.
So Eric, putting up the three stop signs in that location, does it have any negative ramifications to doing it?
So in my mind, the negative ramification is, I mean, people are blowing through the existing. You know, speed or your stop sign at the intersection of Lake just down the road from there. So are people actually going to stop at it? A certain fraction are going to blow through it. I mean, you know, for a while there, the trooper was whacking people for running the red light. And his threshold was basically, he wasn't trying to get people that were doing like a rolling stop and going through there slowly. He was getting people that were making no attempt to slow down and so were blowing through the the stop sign at. You know, 30 or 40 miles an hour. So there's going to be some, there's no question. The the real question that they wanted to pursue with that particular intersection. Is that coming, I guess it would be heading west. There's very poor visibility at the intersection there. And the goal of the stop is not necessarily to eat a slowdown traffic, but because there are some real sightline issues. Coming there from one direction. So that that's really the goal of it. Will people stop? You know, they will if they get enough tickets. So that's, that's my take on it. I've discussed this with the resident state trooper. You know, we've gone over the pluses and minuses. You know, he's fairly neutral on it. You know, we, we drove it both ways. And his cruiser looking at sightlines, you know, and he agrees from one direction. There is definitely a sightline issue there. He's kind of neutral as to whether it's a good idea or not. We both kind of concluded that we might try it and run it that way for six months or a year and see whether it helps. And if it doesn't, take it back out. And if it does, leave it in. That's my take on it.
What did this, what did the Safety Committee come up with? Is that one of their recommendations?
That was one of the things they recommended, yes.
Is that, how how many other recommendations did they have?
A lot. Uh, I don't know, probably 15 or 20 total. So a fair number.
But that was the, that was the most egregious problem over there?
No, that's not the most egregious, but that's the easiest to address. Because that is painting two stop bars and putting up two stop signs. So that's the the least invasive thing you can do of all the proposals and suggestions. Other than what you agreed to at the last meeting was putting in the crosswalk between Lakeside Drive. Basically from Island Street across Lakeside Drive. But that that's going to happen when we paint also. So the reason why I'm suggesting this now. Is it because obviously the more ideal time to do it would be right before you get an increase in pedestrian traffic, which is in the summer. But because we're painting the roads now, if we're going to do it, this is the time to do it.
I I motioned that a new three-way stop sign.
I got one more question. Eric, I think you said that one resident had a concern, but then they, their answer or their concern was dismissed or what was the concern?
What, the the resident had a concern that. Nobody was going to be, people were going to be blowing through it because they'd never had a stop sign before. So so her point was a good one in that we're going to have to do some approach notification. And put up a sign that says, stop ahead. You know, and put it out there for residents to know, which is a perfectly valid point, and we would do that as part of this if we're going to do it.
Okay. Scott, you were going to make the motion.
Right. Ready?
Yeah.
I motioned that a new three-way stop sign be installed at the intersection of Lake Road and Island Street.
I'll second.
I'll second it. Further discussion? You know, the Traffic Committee had discussed various items related to that location. I really don't think it's a bad idea to try it, especially if the neighbors closest to that area are in favor of it. So I do believe it's a good idea, and if we do have problems, we can always make a removal of those stop signs.
Exactly.
There are problems.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, Jeff. It's like Eric had moved the sign to the other side of the, of Lake Road in your, in your neighborhood. And. I think we should maybe take a look at that data too, before we really make a decision on stop signs, because maybe something's needed on that side as well. So I wouldn't be in favor of a stop sign until we get data.
Well. Since you're going to the other side of the lake, there's no, there's no area on. The other side of the lake where you're going to have the opportunity to put a stop sign. There's, there's very, there's already a four-way stop at the one intersection on Lake and West. And there's a three-way stop on Lake and Ardoney. So. You know, I think, Jeff, what that location is, is really more of summer traffic. And I think what the Traffic Committee was after was there's so much foot traffic there during the summer, because that's the most used right away up around the lake. That they were just looking for alternatives to sit there and try to slow traffic down.
You know, as as somebody that's ran around the lake a lot of times, the 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 traffic seems to be on that one section of. Over where your house happens to be is where I noticed all the, the speed seems to happen. So I would like to look into a little bit more before we kind of jump the gun and throw stop signs up. That's my opinion.
Okay. Understood. Anyone else? Adrian, would you like to talk to us?
Uh, no, actually, I don't have a specific opinion on this. You know, I I don't know the traffic on Lake Road well enough. I, I go through there periodically, but I'm just not over there enough, so.
Anybody else? Paul? Scott?
I think that that they, you guys made the Traffic Safety Committee, and this is the least we could do to. I guess start something to get, get it safer over there for pedestrians.
I mean, if this is something that they want, it's something we can do. Why not, you know?
Right, yeah.
They know their, they know their neighborhood best. I, I'm like Adrian, I, I'm. I'm going on their lead.
The only easier item on the Traffic Committee's. List of items was the mural painting along the road at Lake and Isle. So that was one of the discussion points that we did have, because people slow down when they see things painted on, on the road. This one, to me, is even easier. So.
I mean, Jeff, is there, is there, do you see any downside going to this?
No, I just, you know, like, I mean, uh, I mean, every time the trooper goes down in tickets, it seems like Eric seems to get a flurry of calls. I just don't know if this is going to create. More of an issue. I I don't know, maybe just put a. Sign up like a, in advance, saying that there's going to be a new stop sign in effect, the effect of a certain date. It's just, it's hard to try to police something. Sign up and saying stop ahead, because people have been driving that for years. And it's just people are creatures of habit, and it's going to be hard for them to get used to a new sign there, especially.
If we could do like a railway gate where they got to stop for a certain amount of time and then it'll open.
It's just, you get used to certain things, you know, and it's, it's, it's hard to retrain your brain sometimes.
I, I will agree with that, because there was a new stop sign put in. You know, the way I used to drive to work right here in Andover, you know, at at the corner of, of basically where, where Long Hill. Comes in and it took me like a year before I consistently, I can't tell you how many times I blew through that stop sign. Not because I intended to, but simply because it was not in my head. That that was a stop sign, because I've driven there for 30 years and there was no stop sign. So I get it. And you're right. I think there's going to have to be a grace period. We're going to have to give people some warning. But in a year or two, you know, the people that are running that are the people that have decided they're going to run it anyway.
Besides, this is good for all of our brains. As we get older, we need change, you know, keeps us from getting Alzheimer's and stuff.
Right.
This is to help Jeff out.
Absolutely. Sometimes, old, I'm old. So.
Jeff, do you mind Bill and Lorraine chiming in, even though it's not public speak?
Bill and Lorraine are more than welcome to join us.
I, I see favoritism.
For the record, they are basically right on that corner, so they are one of the properties that would be directly affected.
But we would like to hear from them.
Okay. All right, thank you. I wasn't realizing that I couldn't speak as public, so I really appreciate it. I fully support a stop sign. One, because even though we're not on the corner of Lake and Isle, we're on Lakeside. The traffic there is ridiculously fast and children and dogs and older people are always walking in that area. And sure, people will have a period of adjustment getting used to the stop sign, but they will adjust. You know, just because they haven't seen it in the past, doesn't mean they can't learn and it will slow down people. And that's all I have to say. I support it.
And what I'd like to add is, it kind of ties into what Eric was saying, is that it's probably to our advantage to put it in now. Because there's less people walking around. People will get used to it by the summertime. If you're going to do it, there's some lead time before there's more people out and about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice to meet you. Any further discussion on this issue? All right, let's vote. All those in favor? Putting three stop signs up? Aye. All those opposed? Jeff, are you abstaining?
Jeff, you're muted.
I guess he voted yes.
He, he's muted. I don't think he realizes that.
I'm going to abstain, because I don't, I don't have enough information.
All right, no problem. All right, let's move on. I believe we're on item five. Appointments. Five A is the appointment of William Monroe, Alternative Member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Corps Commission. Now, let's do them both together. And the appointment of. Now, we'll do this one first. Anybody want to make a motion to accept that appointment?
I'm motion to appoint William Monroe as an alternate member of the Inlands and Wetlands.
I'll second that.
Scott seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we're going to move on to the appointment of Marina, or how do I say that, Eric? Marina?
Marina Pandolfi, as best as I can say it now.
Marina Pandolfi, Assistant Finance Officer for Andover Elementary School and the Town Offices.
Oh, you want me to read it? Okay.
No, you're just going to make the motion. You can just make the motion.
I will make a motion.
There you go. Perfect. Well, Scott, are you going to second that?
I will. I second that.
Okay, so all those in favor? Aye. We're going to move to resignations. Six A. We're going to do these together, except the resignation of Laura Edwards. Oh, we don't even have to do this. This is more for informational purposes, because she's a employee of the Board of Education. So Laura Edwards, the Financial Operations Manager at Andover Elementary School, has resigned. Eric, when is her resignation effective?
I believe it's January 7th.
January 7th, okay. And as a second resignation, the resignation of Barbara Griffin as Town Treasurer. Her resignation, Eric, is effective?
It is effective November 28th.
November 28th. Okay, do we need, I mean, is there anything for us to do to accept those? I mean, I don't really think we need to make a motion to accept them. They've already resigned.
Yep, that's correct.
Any of the Board of Selectmen members have any issues with that? Okay. Town Administrators Report. Eric, it's all yours.
Okay, Amanda, can I share the screen?
Um, I think you have to be a host. Hang on, let me.
Eric's never been.
Maybe you have co-host. Oh, perfect. There you go.
Let me get the right one. Okay, hopefully you're all looking at the Administrators Report screen. Am I correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I'm just going to hit the highlights, the things that have changed since I produced this and sent it to you, say, last Thursday.
And you, can you, can you, for the sake of public, which maybe don't, doesn't have the packet, can you enlarge that so it covers the screen width-wise?
Uh, sure.
Thank you. Much better.
So first thing, Sunday, we had an earthquake. The, many of you realized that. I actually thought the boiler in the basement of the town hall blew up. Because it was, you know, surprising to me. I looked downstairs, the boiler indeed had not blown up. I looked outside, I didn't. Um, I looked downstairs, the boiler indeed had not blown up. I looked outside, I didn't see any smoke or a crashed plane. So it took me a while to figure out that that was an earthquake. Um, I think a lot of people had that same reaction. Um, for those of you, I sent to the board some updated information on COVID nineteen since the original plan. The uh, state has taken back the authority and the towns had the authority when they were either in orange or red status in terms of COVID cases to revert back to uh, you know, basically status number two. Um, and the uh, we've, the state has taken that responsibility back from the individual towns and said all of Connecticut is reverted to phase two point one. Um, that doesn't have any huge impacts on the town. The things that are the biggest impacts on individuals is that private gatherings, like gatherings in your home are supposed to be capped at ten people now. Um, not a lot of impact on restaurants, other than they have to go back down to half capacity from uh, three-quarter capacity. Um, not really a big effect on churches here in town or other businesses, or particularly the town hall. So you're also looking at the screen at a graph showing uh, Andover's COVID positivity rate. I took this straight from the raw data and you could see for a period of time, we actually edged into red status, which is more than fifteen cases per day, per hundred thousand population. The weird thing is the state does it on this rolling fourteen-day average. And they uh, to kind of smooth the data out and they only update it once a week. So by the time we updated it, we were already orange and then they updated it again. Um, and we're, we're basically not even orange again. We're back to relatively baseline. Um, we had one case several days ago and we had one case about fourteen days ago. So given that, we're, we're, we're at a pretty low level and not showing any significant community transmission, uh, which is really good. So I'm suggesting that we don't really have any major changes in the posture for the town hall at this point. Um, I think we need to be prepared to react quickly if we start getting spikes. Because everybody around us is spiking. The state as a whole is averaging fourteen to sixteen cases per day for a hundred thousand right now. So on average, about seventy percent of the state is in the red, what, what they're calling like the red category. So the other thing that affects us is the, the uh, governor put out Executive Order nine H, which has an impact on how we conduct meetings. Um, basically it says any in-person meeting that you have, if anybody on that meeting wants to attend remotely, you have to have the capability in place so anybody can attend remotely uh, that meeting, which is gonna affect uh, if we do hold a public meeting or a town meeting for the land acquisition, that would uh, cause us some issues. So I've asked Dennis O'Brien to weigh in on that. He and myself and Carol Lee have kind of pushed this around for a while, trying to figure out how to do this in a reasonable fashion. Um, so basically what we have to be able to do is conduct a town meeting and still be compliant with the executive orders as well as our charter. Um, so, and we also consulted with Rob Miller in the Health Department for that. What we've, what we've kind of come up with, and Dennis can, can elaborate, is doing a kind of a split meeting where the first part of the meeting occurs via Zoom and but we don't check IDs because that was the big stumbling block. Um, we ensure that there's plenty of people that go to the meeting. We let them all in, you know, from the waiting room. We conduct the meeting and after that, so we would still have to elect a moderator, do all that. And then we would conduct a drive-by vote at the town hall. Where you basically drive by, everybody's in mask. The, you pull up to the, the uh, first spot, you show your ID, you get checked off the list as a valid voter. You're, go to the next station, you're handed a poll, you fill it out, you stick it in the box, you drive away and then it gets tabulated um, and announced. So it's not ideal, but it's doable under all the guidelines we have and gets us away from the security problems that we potentially have uh, doing it the way we did it before. So turning to elections, I really wanna thank the registrars and all the poll workers. Um, they did a fabulous job this time on the election. So we had eighty-seven percent turnout of eligible voters in the town of Andover voted. So for us, that is outstanding and I'd like to thank you know, all the election workers that made it happen, as well as the residents who came out and voted. So that was great. Um, you all know, we did the uh, trick-or-treat event during Halloween. That went really well. Um, and that uh, that was a success. So in terms of roadwork and public work stuff, we have now completed all the shimming of Bunker Hill Road, Lake Road, Erdoney and West Street. Uh, we are continuing to fill potholes, um, you know, as long as the weather stays okay. Uh, we're hoping to borrow the hot box again in the next day or so. Um, we've demoed a weather forecasting service that forecasts strictly for public works departments in the Northeast to see whether getting tailored weather information allows us to make better calls on when to call out public works, when to do roadwork, stuff like that. Don't know, we're still in just trial phase. We haven't committed to anything. Um, so you, I told the board a while back that the RFP we put out for grinding up the uh, brush at the transfer station originally, we didn't get any real good options back from it. We explored some other options and uh, Scott Persson was the one who found us a contractor that would do it much more reasonably. Um, I asked the Board of Finance at the last meeting for, to allow me to overexpend that line item to get it done. Um, they did and we're grinding the stuff up now. So we should be able to, to knock that off the list uh, in the next couple of days. Um, this, they're surveying Bunker Hill Road right now for that bridge replacement. We're working on closing out Times Farm Bridge. That's the closeout that's taking forever. Um, in really good news, the steep grant, we just were notified today that we uh, won the steep grant award. So we got a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yay, Eric!
Coming uh, in the spring for repaving. And that will be for reclaiming and paving uh, parts of Long Hill Road as well as uh, that initial section of Shoddy Mill Road. So that's great. It's gonna stretch our, our paving dollars quite a bit. So uh, that's a wonderful thing. Um, the connectivity grant, they poured the concrete for the crosswalk aprons today. Um, with a little luck, that's the last physical stuff they have to do, other than put in the actual signal. So I'm hoping I can go back to Division One Maintenance of DOT and get my encroachment letter and uh, follow on with that. Basically, we have until December thirty-first to sign a purchase order with the contractor that we have lined up right now. Um, if not, we're gonna have to go through the process again. So I'm really hoping I can push them and resolve that um, in the next two months, but it is the state DOT, so it's anybody's guess. Um, town hall, one of the things we are doing is we're implementing a training program called Security Mentor for all the employees in the town hall. Um, and what is, it's an online training program for computer and cyber safety. Uh, it's something we looked at doing this spring, but we've decided uh, gets bumped up the list in terms of emphasis. So we're starting that uh, hopefully in the next week or two. Uh, you had some, I put in the policy, there was some questions about the uh, head librarian Amy and what should be done with that position. Uh, so basically, so you all know what happened is after we instituted the town's new uh, you know, employee handbook. We, one of the problems we have is that the position of head librarian has never really fit into our benefits package that we have. So it has to be corrected one of two ways. Either we have to write a standalone policy. Um, you know, basically employment contract with her or well, actually three ways. Or we just take away your benefits and knock her down to the equivalent part-time position. Um, or we increase her hours to thirty hours as a full-time employee. Cause basically she's getting the benefits of a, a thirty-hour-a-week employee, even though she's working twenty-six. And I don't have a dog in the hunt. That's, I would suggest we do it as part of the next budget process and make a decision. Uh, not immediately, but over time, what we wanna do. Um, if you have any questions about that. Um, there are no updates in forestry, unfortunately. Uh, Rick Zulik, who's the guy we were going through with that, has had some pretty traumatic uh, family stuff that he's dealing with. So that's gonna get delayed uh, a few months. We talked about hunting, um, revaluation, the reval process is going on now. Um, you've all probably got the mailer sent to all of you. We did press releases and all the papers that would publish it. And we put both a website and social media push on to inform residents. Uh, we've already hired the town clerk. The other thing that I would like to do, and I talked to this, the Board of Finance about it and they've agreed, is the prices for oil and diesel the, are really low right now and we have the opportunity to lock in for next year. Um, and I think it's probably in our best interest to do that at this time. What's concerning me is we're doing a really bad job of forecasting our usage. And um, before we do that, I really need to spend a bunch of time trying to figure out what we're actually likely to do based on where we are in terms of COVID. Um, you know, there's just been a lot of variability and how much fuel oil and how much diesel we used. Uh, we talked about the finance department. We applied uh, to the state and federal government for relief from COVID-related expenses. With a little luck, I know that's been uh, they pushed that through at the state level, so it looks like we will probably be getting a reimbursement for that. We ran about nine thousand dollars in total expenses uh, for that. The registrar was very upfront months ago that based on all the requirements from the state relative to the elections, that we will likely uh, run over this year in total by the time we get through with the May uh, you know, May town elections. Um, especially if we have a budget meeting in May town elections and, and whatnot. Just simply because the uh, requirements today, operating in a COVID environment per the, the uh, Secretary of State are more stringent than they were in the past. We're not over budget now, but we may very well be. Um, so that's basically all I have for my report unless you all have questions for me.
Any questions for Eric? Okay, Eric, thank you very much. Let's move on to our old business. I'm assuming we can skip the COVID update. The townwide forestry um, was discussed in Eric's report and old business alarm monitoring for town buildings.
So I had asked Wally for an update, but I did not get it before the meeting. Just to remind you all, I had asked the uh, Board of Fire Commissioners to look into that because I thought they had a lot more knowledge about that area. Basically, we're gonna have to be providing alarm services for our own buildings because the Talon Dispatch Center is no longer doing it. So, but I don't have any updates on that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Um, new business. Nine A, hunting on town property. Do we have any further discussion or does anyone wanna make any motions or do anything related to that issue at this meeting?
What about the, we could, we could just change it to uh, I don't know. Something about the attorney, the town attorney, that he could help us draft a motion after we get everything, or can we wait till next month maybe? If we had all our ducks in a row here.
So we would want the town attorney to draft an ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Related to this? Okay.
I think the conditions are not uh, concrete yet, so I, I, I'm gonna have to, this is just gonna be a work in progress.
Okay.
So if you've made a decision that you're not gonna try to do it for this year's uh, you know, hunting season, then I would say you could draft the ordinance with the town's attorney kind of at your leisure. And then at some point in the spring, when we have a town meeting just for something else, have that as an additional item on the town meeting. Um, I thought if you were trying to push it and get it through relatively quickly, you could consider it adding it to the town meeting uh, related, a potential town meeting related to land acquisition. But if you're not trying to do it for this season, then you could, you would have no problem with waiting. But it's your choice.
But I guess we still could draft a motion that to draft an ordinance with the town attorney and get that out of the way. Definitely.
Yes, I, if I might jump in here, I just unmuted myself, Dennis O'Brien. And uh, I did take careful notes of the public hearing and I'm learning. And I think uh, I would like to take that on with help from um, you know, some of the members of the Board of Selectmen and have it ready for um, as Eric has suggested. You know, sometime uh, after the first of the year. Uh, get it ready for next season. But um, I've learned a lot about it just by listening to you and I know there's a lot of information in the statutes and the regulations and, you know, the DEP uh, policy guidelines, so um, I don't think it's rocket science from my standpoint. But um, I would be glad to, to work on that.
Right. So we could draft a motion and just to have him do it when we get all of our information ready.
I guess the question Scott and Adrian mostly is, when's your timing? Do you want to try to get this done now?
No, for, for next year.
No, to be honest with you, I'd like to have, I'd like to, well, once we get this, before we even go for the thing, I'd like to get together with Scott and maybe, you know, we can even get Carol involved and get a form together for the, for the town permit. So that that's done as well. I mean, let's, let's get the whole thing done completely before. I think that makes sense.
Okay, I like that idea.
Yeah.
All right, so uh, Dennis, if you would, work with Scott and Adrian on, on that. Uh, and Eric, that would be great.
Yeah, that would be my great pleasure and uh, you know, I'm ready to jump in whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you as always. All right, uh, nine to be the twenty-twenty-one meeting schedule? Are there contemplated changes to our meeting schedule? Anyone have a problem with this day? Do we want to move it? Is there any desire to move it?
My only, um, I, I don't think I wanna move it, but my only challenge is sometimes when we get the packet, I look at it on the weekend and then if we need to change something, you know, Friday, Amanda's not in, so. Um, I don't know, but I know Mondays, we want, we like having the meeting because if an employee is um, you know, wants to jump on the call, they're already there still or, or whatever. So anybody else have any any thoughts about that?
No, I think the other advantage of having a Mondays is it, you know, by doing it on Monday, it puts us ahead of the Board of Ed in case we have issues that you know, we need to address for them or vice versa, so. I mean, I think that helps too. Same thing with Board of Finance, you know. If there's something we have to pass along, we know it's coming up. Whether it's for Board of Finance or whatever, we can do that accordingly. Um, I think you're right about the packet. I wish we got it a little sooner in case there is an issue. I, I think it was a little better I wish we got it a little sooner, in case there isn't an issue, I, I think it was a little better. This past, this past time, and I think in general, the packets are getting quicker and better put together, as our.
And I think maybe, and I don't wanna talk for, for Amanda. Maybe she's still gathering things, and that's what's holding it up, you know, on her end, so.
I wasn't even ask, I wasn't even putting this on Amanda, I think just in general, as our meeting. As our meeting agenda is getting a little smaller, and we're catching up on some things.
Yeah.
Getting more manageable for everybody, so.
Yeah, that was only my, my only concern was. By the time I get it and I'm looking at it, it's the weekend and then, you know. Add anything or change something, it's already, it's already Monday and it's too late, so, but, but I feel like the. Um, the advantages for having it on Monday outweigh that, so.
So would this help to send you the draft agenda sooner? So that way, if there's something you wanna add or think about, or get more materials for. You can all take a look.
I don't know if it's the, if the agenda, getting the agenda earlier would help, I think it's just having, getting the packet and just. Having the time to look through it, if it's a long one, you know.
I def, no, I, I definitely think getting the agenda sooner helps, because. I think for me at least, it allows me to know how much time I have to put aside for the packet when it hits. You know.
Problem with putting the packet out sooner is maybe some of the reports won't be available. From the treasurer or tax collector, or, you know, other departments, just because the. You know, the month ends and then a new one begins, and then your meeting is on the second Monday. I think that's why we switched it to the second Monday this past year, it used to be on the first, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep, be right.
Amanda, I have to tell you, being, uh, on the board, the previous go-round, your packets are wonderful.
I'm glad.
You know what you added this month that I love, Amanda, is. You put the break, no, I don't wanna call them breaks, but whatever the next section was, I knew what I was, you know. Like, you put in the add and delete items, that was a great idea, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I think that'll be helpful, and, you know, let me know if there's anything else you want to change or add or. Take away.
Alright, come on, we could do the love fest another time.
Okay, so, so we're, we're obviously gonna stick with the second Monday, uh, meetings at seven o'clock, are there any holiday issues that we're falling into this year?
There's only one.
The, yep, October eleventh one.
Okay. Alright.
This past year, we switched it to the Wednesday, so that's what I suggested.
Well, not problem, but this happened this year too, was, it was the same at his board of ed, so. Um, is it, is it, what's on Tuesdays? I guess for one, one month, it's not a big deal, so just leave it.
Well, what is on Tuesdays? Is there anything on Tuesdays, Amanda? Second Tuesdays?
I don't believe so, I'm looking now.
Yeah, I would just suggest if we, if there's nothing on that Tuesday, October twelfth. I'd say, I'd suggest move it to there, because usually board of ed is the second Wednesday. And I usually like to try and jump on that.
Okay, so let's do that, if we can, Tuesday would be better day. Does anyone wanna make a motion to? Accept the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule, or?
I motioned to accept the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule for the board selectman with the change of. The October thirteenth meeting to the October, October twelfth.
I'll second that.
Just a point of order, the conservation commission is on the second Tuesday of the month. That's there, however.
All of the, uh, video feeds, I would ask Mike. Blazi, if that's a big problem, which I don't think it really would be.
Are you leading the witness, Jeff?
No. Mike, do you have a problem with us, uh, having our meeting on Tuesday that come, uh, conflicts with yours?
Well, I'm on the last, uh, Tuesday of the month.
Oh, great.
It's just a special meeting.
Oh, got it, sorry about that.
Yeah, this is special meeting, cause we got, we, uh, we got hacked last meeting on the regular meeting.
Alright, okay, further discussion, nothing else, Jeff Murray, we're good. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, let's move on. Nine C, planning and zoning commission, eight twenty-four referral for land acquisition.
Okay, so you all have a letter in the packet, as you remember, you sent to the planning and zoning commission, and eight twenty-four referral. For the acquisition of properties that, uh, some individuals and one land trust want to donate to the town of Andover. The planning and zoning commission has examined and decided that it is. Uh, perfectly compliant with the plan of conservation and development. And, uh, they put that conclusion in writing, thus discharging their. Requirements under statute eight dash twenty-four and putting it back in your hands. The only difference that it really makes is that if they had said no. Then when it got to public meeting, it would have had to pass with a greater majority. Uh, than if they said yes. So the good news is, it's through planning and zoning, and then the next step up. Would be to hold a town meeting, cause only a town meeting can accept property on behalf of the town. Legally.
Is that why you were doing the, uh, trying to figure out how we could do a town meeting?
Yes.
If you'd like me to chime in now, I will, Eric.
Certainly.
Okay, so, uh, we've talked about this, and Eric mentioned that, uh. I had talked to him and also to the town clerk, and they had come up with the idea of having a. What is called, uh, you know, you haven't had a special town meeting since before, I believe since before the COVID hit. And, um, you know, then we went through this thing with the budget, where we couldn't, um. We couldn't have a meeting, we had to, we had to go, uh, let the board of finance decide the budget. I wrote a long opinion on that, but this is a little different, this is a special town meeting. And there is a new, um, Eric mentioned the new, um, executive order nine H, which permits. What, what, what it calls a hybrid meeting. Um, having a special town meeting in Andover is, is, is. It's kind of unusual, because you have a, you have a minimum requirement, twenty-five electors. Have to be, have to attend the meeting in order for it to go forward. Um, so that, that creates a bit of a problem, especially in terms of holding the meeting electronically. So the thought was to hold a part of it electronically, and then, uh, convene to a vote. Similar to what Vernon did on its budget last, uh, spring. Uh, they, they did it, and they got permission from the state to do it, but after that, the governor. Stopped it from going on elsewhere, including Andover. Uh, I think there was no, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not, this is not to say that Andover was contemplating that. Cause I had already written an opinion that you agreed with, that we had, we had a law of the board of finance to do their thing. Without, um, without a vote from the, 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 the public. But anyway, in, in, in this instance, um, Eric and I and the town, uh. Clerk have come up with the notion of a hybrid meeting. Uh, where you would have the first part of the meeting be on, um, electronically. Second part would be a drive-up or walk-up vote at the town hall. Uh, and that, that way, the town clerk or her delegate would be able to check IDs. And to make sure that the people attending the town meeting are actually, um. You know, electors of the town, people that are registered to vote in the town of Andover. Sounds a little elaborate, but, um, I think it passes muster legally under the governor's, um. The governor's executive orders, especially order, um, nine H, the most recent one, and, um. Seven B going way back to the springtime. So anyway, um. My view is on this that we, you know, I've, I've created a, quickly created. A resolution to call a special town meeting. In order to have a, a special town meeting, there has to be a resolution from the board of selectmen. I'm sure that the Maguire, uh, first selectman Maguire knows that. Because he served on, um, the board previously, when special town meetings were scheduled. So you have to have a resolution, I drafted a resolution, I initially included a reference to. A, um, a bow hunting ordinance, which I've. Put in there only in case you wanted to move really fast on that. But what I've done is I've, 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 I've deleted that part of it. And since, I don't know if Eric, if you've received it or looked at it, but I've sent you a copy of the resolution by email.
Okay, I haven't seen if you had a draft since about seven fifteen, I haven't seen it.
Alright, well, I sent it, I sent it after I heard the, uh, discussion on the, uh. The bow hunting and, uh, the town, uh, you know, your, your, uh, public hearing and also the discussion. After that, you know, basically with Scott and, um, leading the way. And, uh, the indication to me was that this wasn't something that was an emergency that had to be done real soon. As far as the planning and zoning commission's decision on the eight twenty-four review. Eric advised me that one of the, uh, grand tours of the properties that you're going to be getting. Uh, for no, uh, compensation in return, was anxious to have this done with. And I think, um, you know, that indicated to me that maybe you ought to consider. Uh, passing a resolution tonight, setting up a, a town, a town, special town meeting to get this done with. Over and done with, but that of course is not up to me, it's up to you. I have just given you the, um, the means, along with, uh, Eric and Carol Lee to, to do this. And to do it, you know, relatively soon, I would say within a three or four week period, because things have to happen. Before that, as you know, there has to be a, a notice put in the newspaper, there has to be notice given, I think, uh. I'm not sure if it applies to a special town meeting, I think it does, I think there has to be notice sent out to everybody in town. Uh, these are, are sections of the charter that if I had my, uh, if, if, if you were doing another charter revision. I would recommend that you change that. But it is, it is the law of the land right now, to have a, a minimum, um. A minimum participation of twenty-five electors of the town, plus, uh, lots of notice to the public. In advance of the special town meeting, so, you know, it, it, it would be probably, uh, Eric, you. Have, will have to tell me, uh, and, and the rest of us. It would probably be good to, if you're gonna schedule it now, do it tonight, rather than waiting up for a month. Before you schedule it, or having a special ti, uh, selectmen's meeting to schedule it. It would probably be a good idea to schedule it about three or four weeks into the future. To give everybody time to adjust to, uh, what needs to be done beforehand. But, uh, that's, uh, anyway, that's, that's, that's it, the way I see it, with regard to the, um. The property acquisition, I mean, everybody seems to think it's a great idea, it'll probably pass easily. You'll have to make sure twenty-five people are there to vote on it. But, um, you have all the tools you would need to, um, to bring it to a special town meeting. Within a reasonable amount of time from tonight, uh, if you, if you so choose to do so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dennis, does, do any of the other members of the board of selectmen? Have any items on this they wanna discuss, or can we actually? Pass a motion to move this resolution in this town meeting forward? Anybody?
If you wanted to push it forward, you could simply select a date. Uh, about a month from now, to make everybody's lives easier logistically, and the town would execute.
Does anyone have a timeline? Do, do you care if we do it before our next meeting, after our next meeting?
I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the avan, advantages or disadvantages are, so I'm kinda still. Thinking here.
Eric, um, I mean, you have more knowledge on the property situation. What do we need to do here? Apparently, there was a, um, one of the. The gifters wanted this done, what do we need to do to satisfy this?
I mean, the, that individual's Tom Talbot. He, and maybe Mike can answer this question better, but he just wanted, uh. He wanted it over and done with, I mean, I think his philosophy is. He's giving the town something and not getting anything in compensation, and he would like us to expedite it. Mike, maybe you can weigh in on that better.
Yeah, Tom was upset because it wasn't moving very quickly, and he was threatening to pull it back. And that's, that issue's been settled, I'm keeping him and the land trust up to date with where we are, I don't see a problem with Tom on this at all. Did you hear me?
So, does, does anyone have any negative issues related to this, because?
None at all.
We don't have any negative issues, let's, let's move this forward.
Let's move it forward.
Yeah.
Quickly as we can, so. Do you wanna do it like we did this open meeting before our next regularly scheduled meeting, I mean. Took a while, but can it really take that long? I know you have to do additional logistics.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to break in, but that won't work too well. Given the fact that you're gonna have a vote, of people are gonna be driving by outside of the building to vote. I mean, you could do it that way, but, um. You know, you have to give people some time to vote, and, um.
So, so this is not like. And then drive by the next day, it's, it's come to the meeting on Zoom and then get in your car and drive to vote.
Yeah, the same, the same, same time, that's what Vernon did, and, and it worked pretty well for them, for their budget. And it was, it was a budget that was almost certain to pass, because there was no increase. This is an, uh, this is an item that's almost certain to pass. It's kind of unfortunate that we have to have a special town meeting on an issue like this, where the town is not spending any money. But, uh, it is, it, it, the word is acquisition. In the charter, and acquis, this is an acquisition, so it requires a special town meeting. I'm trying to do this as simply as possible, and, uh, working with Eric and, and the town clerk, and, um. Yeah, because of the, uh, nuances in the charter, which require twenty-five members, uh, twenty-five electors to be there. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a little awkward, but, uh, I thought that we, we came up with a good solution, and. Uh, you know, and the other thing, reason I'd rather see you do it quicker, is since people are gonna have to be outside to vote. It's gonna get colder, gonna run into the holidays.
Okay. December, December eighth or December tenth? Anyone? Problem with those days?
Um, nope, nope. So are the people accepting the votes gonna be outside?
Well, aren't we supposed to have the piece of paper and then drive by? I mean, while we're driving up to a desk. With our license, they're gonna hand us a ballot, we're gonna check yes, we're gonna drive to the next station and hand it to the registrar.
Yeah.
And we gotta get twenty-five people to say yes, or twenty-five people to show up, they don't even, they don't even all have to say yes, they just. Have to have twenty-five people show up and get the count.
What about doing it like a Saturday morning or a Saturday afternoon?
You can do that, go ahead.
That, that, that's legal, you can do it.
Pick a day, let's go. December fifth.
No, December fifth, something's going on with the PTA and the rec commission, so, that's not gonna work.
December twelfth.
I mean, I'm not saying it has to be done, this is Saturday, I'm just thinking that if you wanna get a bunch of people and be able to do it during the daylight. Um, that would be simpler.
We do it at the transfer, can we do it at the transfer station?
Well, you know, I'd actually contemplated that, so. Um, it's not a terrible idea, but I don't think Carol would be too excited about standing down there and, and doing it there.
Well, she's got a nice, she's got a brand-new warming shed.
And she only, and she only has to do twenty-five people.
Yeah, twenty-five people, call it a day.
I think.
Well, uh, seven, seventy-five might show up, this might really, this might really catch on.
I mean, it is a brand-new tra-
I mean, it is a brand new transfer station. It's got new pavement. It's very attractive.
Very nice, yeah.
We've never been there. People come in and vote.
But here's the problem is what happens if people don't have transfer station stickers? You just have to let them drive through and just vote and not go then, right?
You can have a one day pass free to get people to buy in.
Um, and then they'll have to go get the passes.
All right, can we do the twelfth at the town hall?
I thought we were doing the transfer station.
I, I love the transfer station idea, but Eric is right. What if somebody
Doesn't have a sticker.
Doesn't have a sticker. Come through.
But we exempt them for one day.
Just to come in and vote? They can come vote at the transfer station.
And they get to see what their forty dollars would buy. Maybe more people buy stickers.
Some marketing.
So, so we're going to give a free day at the transfer station for all
Only if they vote though. They have to vote.
Well, that's, I don't know if that's legal. That's, uh, that may be illegal. That may be, uh, kind of influencing.
Didn't say how they vote. We just said they have to vote. We don't care how they vote. Well, we do.
I'll tell you what, I, I've created enough of a circus already with Eric and Carol. And I think it's, I think it's getting a little out of control. But that, you know, I'm just
Well, this is only, this is only sarcasm. It's fine.
At least It's amusing. But, um,
Come on, I, 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 I almost, we're almost there. So what do we want to do?
I say town hall, December fifteenth, uh,
December twelfth.
Twelfth.
At Santa
Take a time.
Paula, can we get your band to play again?
For a small fee, yeah.
Okay.
And what time would you like the meeting to start?
Paul, what time's the band?
Ten.
All right, ten o'clock then.
Well, Diane was saying something. What, what were you trying to say, Diane?
That, uh, Santa at the library is on the twelfth.
Good, they can, they can vote and then head over to the library.
At what time?
Twelve o'clock, twelve to two.
So.
Ten o'clock it is.
So we would, presumably we would schedule the meeting at ten and then we would schedule voting to go from eleven to twelve.
None.
That would be my guess.
I think that is awesome. Someone want to make a motion to that?
Well, do we want to go over the, go past the twelve o'clock so people on their way to see Santa can vote?
They, they can get in line first.
Do you want Carol Lee to hang around there all day? Uh, checking people in?
I mean, she's an elected official. I think it, you know, okay.
It's a free piece of land, eleven to twelve, twenty-five people vote yes. Are we ready? Who's making a motion for this one? Come on.
Do, do you have to attend the Zoom meeting to, in order to vote? Or can you just vote?
No.
No, you could just vote.
Don't.
Uninformed voters.
Yeah.
Well, there are ways to be informed.
Okay.
That is a valid point, Diane.
So
There are other ways to get informed.
Diane, the, the reason that that's in place is that if you think about how we would do a town meeting now, if you held the town meeting and somebody walked in five seconds before the vote was counted and they were a legal resident, you would have to allow them to vote. You can't say, no, you can't come in now. And the drive up is, is essentially the same way. So you're still allowed to legally show proof of residency and vote right there on the spot.
Okay.
Well said, Eric.
I motion to prepare a resolution to be signed by the Board of Selectmen to set December twelfth as a date for a town meeting to authorize the acceptance of three parcels of land to be donated to the town of Andover. One parcel is being donated by Tom Talbot, former resident of Andover compromising of seven point eight four acres and two par- um, parcels from the Northern Connecticut Land Trust comprising of five point three acres and one point sixteen acres.
And you should add that, so ten o'clock at the town office building.
Ten o'clock at the town hall, ten AM.
Back at that.
Just as a, there is a Zoom meeting before this and then a vote at eleven. Correct? Okay.
I would say that's probably how you want to do it. Yes.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Okay. Um, Eric, can you remove that from the screen? So we get to see everybody. Um, Eric, do you have anything additional on the brush removal at the transfer station other than what you've already told us?
Nope.
Okay. Um, item nine E was removed from the agenda. Can the approval of the minutes from Wednesday, October fourteenth?
I motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty, Board of Selectmen regular meeting.
Back in it.
All right, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi. Bye.
Uh, we have, uh, the treasurer's report that were provided to us. Any questions, any discussion on the treasurer's report? Okay. Eric, do you have anything that you want to bring up related to any of the reports?
Not unless you have questions for me. I think you all know the, the status at this point.
Okay.
Eric, um, I mean, we're doing a lot of things online now. Um, I was talking to one of our residents that's familiar with the Bolton system and mentioned that Bolton is currently using a, uh, I think it's called View System. Um, and to tie in, you know, so they're able to do their dog licenses, all that stuff online.
Sure.
Um, I know we have some things online. Um, don't know if it'd be worth trying to tie that together. They also do their dump stickers online, which is something that's been brought up repeatedly by many of the residents. Is that something that we want to maybe look into?
So the, the one thing I would say is that there's, uh, I, I mean, like, for instance, a lot of towns use Permit View, an online permitting system, uh, for the building department. And I think that can be successful. That's not zero cost. There's definitely a cost to implement that. Um, you know, and, uh, but it's, none of what you're asking isn't doable. Um, it's just a question of do we want to pay for it? Um, you know, and specifically regarding the transfer stickers, you know, if you do it online, what is your method of verification? How do you ensure that the right sticker gets on the right car? That's really the only
Well, I mean, what they do is they, they require you to um, upload a copy of your driver's license to show that you are an Andover resident. Um, yeah, or sorry, in their case, a Bolton resident and, um, um, if they don't, if they can show a piece of mail showing that they, you know, if, let's say it's within thirty days or whatever, if they've just moved to town. You know, if they can show a piece of mail showing that they have property here, um, and we can verify that there's been a transfer, um, you could also do it that way. They do, they send the stickers in the mail and trust that their residents will put them on the appropriate cars and not sell them on eBay, I guess, but, um, you know, I'm just thinking it seems, it does seem to be very involved process for the town clerk's office. Um, let's just try to give us another way to look at doing it for, as a possibility. You know, and given a surrounding town is doing it and seems to be doing well with it, just an idea.
E- even if it was, oh, you know, fifty percent online, you know, it would help Carol out immensely.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it's, it was so hit and miss this year. Um, I, I know COVID had a lot to do with it, but even the years, you know, be- before that we did it. I mean, it, the office really gets overrun. It requires sort of work Saturdays. And we still had residents that had, had a part-time getting in and getting it. So, um, you know, I mean, I guess, do we, do we cater to the majority of residents that will do it correctly? In, in, you know, or do we worry about the, the, the five or six people that are going to manipulate the sticker system for some other, you know, or usage? But I guess I was hoping that we would cater to the bulk of the people that do it the way they're supposed to. But, you know.
I agree with Adrian. We should look into it to sit there and see if there is a way that we can do it effectively.
Online.
Online.
Yeah.
Um, Eric, um, um, now, I, I was looking at the treasurer's information, but I think I'm really looking at the tax collector's report, so I'll sit there and I'll wait till that. Uh, do you, anyone have any other questions related to the treasurer's report and the treasurer's, um, office? Any of the items, any, any of the other selectmen members? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Um, Eric, do you have any issues related to the appropriation transfers or over expenditure requests? Anything there?
Uh, no, I did send one directly to the Board of Finance, which under ideal circumstances I would have done, sent to you first and then Board of Finance. Um, but I did that because ultimately they're the ones that approve it. Um, but because I had time availability for bringing the grinder in, starting basically Friday. Um, so it was just a timing issue.
Um, what's the, I mean, given the recent resignations, what, what is the status with the, uh, software implementation for um, finance?
So I think at this point that the implementation is on hold until we have a finance director, because part of what has to happen is we've got to update the chart of accounts. You know, and we're going to need a finance director in place to, the finance director is going to want to have input into that.
Did it? But am I, am I wrong? Uh, uh, you know, we've been hearing certainly from, from Barbara that she's been working on chart of accounts for a month plus. Isn't that done already?
Um, no, I don't think she's lately been doing much on, she did something about a year ago.
No, that was actually part of the discussion on, on a couple of the the finance board meetings. And even when we were talking about doing the software, she brought it up. That there was something she had been working on and, and she thought she pretty much had it worked out.
Well, so she had a vague outline, not a vague outline, but a, um, a fairly high level sketch of how the chart of accounts would look like for the town of Andover, but it really wasn't broken down all the way to the object. Um, so it would still need quite a bit of work.
Okay, I misunderstood what she was putting forward that I thought based on the conversations during some of that software meeting that this was something that was sort of worked for already. So, I, I, my mistake, I apologize.
If it was, I haven't seen it, honestly.
Okay.
Well, can you ask her? So just ask her, you guys, chart of accounts and, and ask Laura where her chart of accounts is because assuming Laura has one also. I mean, I'm with Adrian, there should be something somewhere. I mean, we have had the same discussion about the standard charter accounts for the state for
Yeah, I mean, Laura, the state already has a basic outline of what they're looking for. You have to match up to that. There is an object fluctuation, obviously, at the town level. But again, as Jeff said, Laura had also made the same, um, at least I, I thought she'd made the same, you know, uh, um, alluded to the fact that she had already been working on this and pretty much had it worked out as to what we needed, you know?
I mean, and at least if we can get those, we should run those by the auditor to get his take on it and say that makes sense or that doesn't make sense, and then try to get them implemented into this new software as quickly as possible, because I would imagine the implementation is more by the software company. You know, we just need to provide the basic building blocks and then they put it in and then
Sure. Yeah, they, so they're going to do the migration and they're going to do the mapping from the current to the proposed. Um, but, a- and yes, the, the state does have a standardized set of chart of accounts adopt something very similar. Um, so I went through the state's guidelines for chart of accounts and eliminated all the account detail I thought we didn't need as a town. So obviously we don't have sewers, we don't have an awful lot of things that are built into the state's chart of accounts. So, I mean, I don't think it would be the end of the world to implement straight the state's chart of accounts. But I would assume if we're bringing in somebody that's a finance director, they're going to want some say in that. That would be my presumption.
And, and again, I don't have a problem with necessarily waiting for that, given that that hiring process is moving forward. My concern was some way that given there's going to be a lot of stuff on that person's plate walking in the door, if we can hand them something and say, you know, could you take a look at this as a, as a first priority so that we can get this off the ground while you're settling in? That would be a plus. That's all.
Understood.
Okay, anything else related to that topic in the treasurer's department? Okay. Well, we were actually on budgets, I'm sorry. Uh, let's go to the tax collector's report. Um, tax collector's office appeared, appeared to have collected one million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents in the month of October. Um, Eric, if you could do one favor for me on that report, could you find out the, I'm assuming the receipt column is deposits, just make sure there's a couple holes there that I would like you to ask about. Specifically on the twenty-second through the twenty-third of October. All right, nice new report from the tax collector regarding percentage of collections. How much is real estate, personal property and vehicles? Any questions related to the, that issue? Any information? No? Okay, then there are refunds of excess payments.
So there actually aren't refunds. Um, those went in there because they've been sitting in your bin and they haven't actually got signed since the last meeting. You all approved them at the last meeting. However,
That is an outright lie. And I've been in my, in that office about five times and I can show you the stuff. And in fact, Eric, the letter that you put in the package was in my bin that I opened. So I will be in there tomorrow to sign whatever you need.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
All right. Um, assessor's report. Um, I'm assuming we all received our documentation from the assessor's office as to what the plan is for our revaluation. Wonderful article in the River East relating to reva- the revaluation process. Um, anyone have any questions for Eric or any concerns? No? Okay. Uh, departmental reports for the fire department, the resident state trooper, the town clerk. Are there any specific questions to any of the reports that were provided?
So the, the only thing I would put in there is that, uh, you all know there's been a rash of burglaries or vandalism at the Andover Town Plaza. Um, I know our resident state trooper, they have been, those incidents have been part of a larger pattern that the state police is, uh, tracking. And basically they can see the progression from the time of the crimes that the same, you know, two individuals have been, uh, conducting the crimes or just basically moving along in a linear fashion. Um, one of the nights the vandalism occurred here, they traced those same two individuals to something like twenty separate, uh, break-ins in one, uh, evening. So these are fairly prolific, uh, hoodlums. Um, hopefully there will be some good news to report, uh, fairly quickly. Um, about that, but Um, about that, but that's all I want to say at this point. Um, the the armed robbery at the Shell Station, there are arrest warrants out. Or the individual, they're pretty sure they know. Again, that was part of a series of armed robberies. And that individual, as far as I know, has been identified. So hopefully, that will be prosecuted fairly quickly. Um, that's all I have on that report.
Okay. Uh, any of the Board of Selectmen members have any other questions, any other issues? Okay. Uh Eric, I'm assuming there's no correspondence.
Uh, the only real correspondence was what was in your packet. There was a updated. Uh draft agreement between A H M Youth Services and the towns. Um, that was in your packet for you to refer. If any Board of Selectmen member is available tomorrow, I forget what time, I think it's at twelve thirty, or it's at one, sorry. There is a a meeting where they're going to go over that. Um, unfortunately, I have kind of three conflicting things all at that time. So I would prefer not to attend that meeting, um because I want to go to a training seminar myself. So if anybody. Member of the Board of Selectmen is free at that time tomorrow. Uh I sent you all emails asking you whether you would be available to uh go to that. If none of us can do it. Linda Fish, who's on the Board of Finance, uh said she would attend, so at least we'll have one member. But it would be nice for either myself or the Board of Selectmen to attend um and get the feedback from A H M. Um, and then I also, in the packet, was the one letter from the resident that opposed hunting on town property. That was earlier in the packet. That's pretty much what I have in terms of correspondence.
Okay. Uh, we're at our public speak, nine seventeen. So, let's go around the room. Mike and Kathy Palazzi, you are first on my screen.
Now, we're all set, thank you.
Alright, thank you for attending. Diane Grenier.
Oh, I'm all set also. Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Uh Jerry Creme. Alright. Jerry, you're a little slow on the mute button, so we're gonna skip you. Joanne or Herbert?
Thanks.
You're all set? Okay, alright, thank you very much. Uh Dennis O'Brien is not a member of the public, so he'll have to sit there and do without speaking. Um, I think we're done. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi. Hi.
I do believe this is about the shortest meeting we've conducted this year, which considering there was a public hearing too. Pretty good.
You don't have to jinx us there, Eric.